Line item 742, which is Grotten Utilities. So Director Gade. The first one is Phoenix Laboratories.
The first item is an expense of about just over $90,000 for Phoenix Environmental Laboratories. This expense is just about complete at this point, and I want to make that clear. As a result of the work that we were doing with environmental partners for the PCBs, the EPA made requests that we do additional testing. In that testing, not only did they make one request, it snowballed into another request and another request. So something that we expected to be about maybe $10,000 started to snowball, and we are now coming to get it approved as the work has pretty much been completed at this point. So I do apologize for that. So we had about $90,000 that we have just about completed testing in order to put all of the... There was a dirt pile that had PCBs that we had talked about in a prior meeting, that dirt had potential PCB contamination. This testing cleared that pile, and that pile is now pretty much spread around the plant, and they're... and is basically gone. It's all back in place. So as a result of that, I worked with finance to look at that, and we're actually going to be issuing purchase orders to Phoenix Labs to identify... Phoenix Labs is used in multiple departments across the place, and we believe we could have found it a few weeks earlier if we had identified that. But the testing was in place, and I realize it's a large amount of money.
Okay, Councilor Depot?
So the original order, which you're saying started out, we estimated around $10,000?
Basically, there was no estimate. She asked for additional testing. Operations decided to do the testing with the existing just lab routine that they use out of the water plant for water testing. Also, stuff is sent from the back. Cover Quarks uses it when they test the water on the sewage systems. You heard that from Heidi a few months ago. So it was unanticipated and then caught us unawares.
So at what point did this exceed the $10,000 subsequent date?
This work was all done at the end of July, beginning of August.
So I guess I'm confused about the... Once it exceeded $10,000, shouldn't it have been brought up then?
What happened is it all went out. It should have. But we were unaware of it, and the testing had gone out, and the bills were just coming back in.
Right, but the bills didn't come back in expecting to be $8,000, and they came in at $90,000 all of a sudden. Right? They must have been added up, and they must go through someone in the department that goes, "Ooh, this is getting kind of high for all these bills from the same place."
Yep, they definitely did. And we've brought it to the... This is basically the first meeting set to get it through. Because the financials that we reviewed today are basically the August financials, which is the bills that we get in that time period.
Councilor Depot?
My understanding, I know that we've had issues with the bringing things to the council that come up to $10,000. However, in the past year, I thought that we had kind of permeated the whole department, and everyone knows that anything goes over $10,000, that it needs to come to the council, and we need to be made aware of it. So I know you're saying "we" were unaware, but who's the "we"? Where's the point at which, you know... Have we resolved whoever missed this to now, hey, if invoices come in that we're expecting to be under $10,000, but they start going above it, is there a trigger to notify you right away instead of apparently what happened here, which is, oh, no, this went over 10 grand two months ago, and we're just now noticing it? Like, how can we remedy this?
We actually did three things. We decided to try to put some controls in place to catch it earlier so that Phoenix Labs would be aware of who was spending what money and where it was coming into so it was identified to go to the right department. So that is one, to issue a purchase order. Number two, we did internal discipline with the... Inside the organization so that we remind people, have a good way to remind that we're aware of that. And number three was, we actually worked with Phoenix Labs and have them routing all the invoices directly to AP directly so that we get them as soon as they come in. In the... Some of the vendors are still sending invoices directly to departments, so it takes an extra week or two to get the invoices and to actually find them in the accounts payable system so that we are aware that they're there. That was the three things, right, Ron?
So that's going to prevent the next occurrence? So I guess the question the council is going to have is, okay, what's the next Phoenix Lab? Right? Because we've had this before. And basically, it's almost like we're seeking permission... Forgiveness, not permission. We're not doing it in advance, and it's almost like we don't have our arms around our purchasing policy. The 1004, right? I mean, we have a policy that we're supposed to be following. So have we implemented controls so that, one, for this direct thing, Phoenix Labs, won't happen again? But more importantly, globally, it won't happen again with whatever the next thing is. It may be multidisciplinary.
That was absolutely the goal, to do the internal retraining with the personnel operations.
So we think it's in place?
We believe it's in place, and it is... We made it more than a year, and after we rolled out the purchasing policy, I thought we were pretty well set.
Now, this PCB testing is for construction, for Phase 1?
This is for the Phase 1. It was the work that needed to be done because of the construction of the plant.
So I want to make sure the council understands that this is for the construction phase, the tie-in of the new plant to the old plant, and the disposal of the dirt, and those kind of things. It's not for Phase 2, which is PCB remediation of the old plant. This is all tied to the project. That's correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay, Councilor Depot? I'm sorry, Councilor Stanford, my apologies.
So when the DEP requested a second test, did you all not conference with this agency, Phoenix Environmental, to understand, okay, another test is going to be done, and then there's going to be a price point at that point to be able to say, hold on, we exceeded this $10,000 budget, so let's bring it to the council? Knowing that the second test was going to be commenced?
I actually do not believe operations believed that they were going to rack up this type of bill.
But that's not my question.
They weren't... Phoenix Labs doesn't have a budget on what they do for us. We send them testing to do, and they just do it and invoice us.
How often does Phoenix Lab invoice us? I mean, do they routinely invoice us?
A lot, yes.
Okay, so... Well, it's council, and then I'm going to... Well, I'm going to ask this question. At some point, we went beyond 10, and we don't go from 10 to 80. We went to 10 to 20, then 20 to 30, and 30 to 40. At some point, somebody said, should have said, you know what? I don't think this is right. Doesn't this need to go to the council? Doesn't this need to go to the Utility Commission? And so we're talking several months?
No, no, this is... We're talking several weeks. It started...
Well, you said July.
The end of July. I think it was the last week of July and into August.
There were a couple that may have been last fiscal year because we had... From a coding issue. I don't remember the exact date.
Right. It's a very... It's a fairly concentrated thing, and then it added up very quick. And then, all of a sudden, we had a bunch of bills in accounts payable.
Okay, Councilor McCabe?
Did we get an overall estimate? Or do we have sort of their laundry list of this is... These are our prices per this type of test? And did we know what tests are going to... It sounds like we didn't even know we were getting billed. Can we audit this, all of these tests, and audit... Are they doing things that were expected or requested?
Back several months ago, we ran a purchase order through you for environmental partners to perform all the required EPA testing to close this up tied in a knot. That scope of work included performing the PCB testing. When the EPA changed the scope, they started to change exactly what they wanted in order to make it okay to use the dirt. That fell out of that scope, and it was just sent to the laboratory, and they were told to bill GU direct at that point on our other accounts. And operations didn't realize... And they didn't realize, number one, that it was going to be quite so much money, and, number two, that it wasn't really decisionable at that point, and it was just happening. That day by day, they were testing things. They were using a tractor, moving the dirt around, sending testing out the next day, moving the dirt again, sending tests out, and it just happened very quickly during that month. Month to six weeks or so.
Any other comments, Councilor Depot?
I guess I have like a logistical question in... Probably for Ron Yuhas, actually. So when things come into the accounting system, are they not assigned to the project? Or does Phoenix Labs... Because I understand how the billing for these things works. Sometimes it's like $495 per test, and you do like 55 tests, and like that's your invoice or whatever. So it's kind of hard to categorize things sometimes for this kind of testing. But do we not, when we get the invoices into AP, do we not categorize them? Like, this is the project, this project, this is that project? Do they not get like job numbers, or... I don't know how our accounting system works for that.
For some items, there are work orders that will get charged, and they'll be tracked under that work order. This was direct billed right to a GL account. These Phoenix invoices, when they came in, they weren't put on a work order. They were just charged right to the expense account.
So the issue is kind of that they were miscategorized, which made it hard to catch on your end?
Which is that... And we didn't... The other piece of it is we didn't issue a PO, which would have captured it from the other side. If you didn't have an actual work order or job order number, if you had the PO, the PO would track it, and then it would kick that when it goes over.
So do we not do POs or job numbers for every job that we do so that we don't have that problem?
We do not do that for everything, no.
Is there a reason that we don't do that?
It's just the amount of invoices that flow through. If we had a PO for every single invoice, it would be an astronomical amount of POs issued. We were looking at certain items that we may circle back to and start issuing, I want to say a blanket PO, but kind of a larger PO for that year to say, all right, we know we can only spend $40,000 on this one vendor. Let's just issue the PO. So that way, it does trigger that event. But for a lot of items, they just go right to the GL account if they're not charged for a work order. And then, I mean, there are still significant amounts of POs that are issued. I don't want to say that we don't issue a lot of them either.
Seeing that this job, water treatment plant, is a reimbursable kind of thing, and we have a large fund that we have coming that the DPH has to sign off on, you would think that we would be tracking all these costs for this project, right? I mean, doesn't that make sense?
100%.
All right, Councilor Depot?
Well, I just want to comment, because I have seen invoices from Phoenix Labs, so I know that like it is... Can be difficult to track them all because sometimes you have like just like 50 in a row. There's like, for a short period of time, they'll send you them all at once. So I do understand that. I guess the thing that's a little difficult, or maybe it's just a lack of communication with the lab, because I know that they do, they will organize things by purchase order or whatever. But it just is difficult for us because this seems to keep happening. There keeps being things that's like, oh, we didn't foresee this. And then, three months later, we just realize it's a problem. So it's frustrating on our end that we can look at it and go, hey, how about this solution? How about we have to issue a purchase order for anything related to the water treatment project? It's frustrating that I can think of that solution, and three months ago, it wasn't thought of by GU. So that's just like, makes it frustrating to see that afterwards. And I think that's where our like questioning is coming from a little bit.
Thanks, Councilor Carter.
So I've seen this several times, and to me...
Are you on?
Nope. I am now. I've seen this several times in the past few years, not just here. And to me, and I think other people looking in or listening in, the way that it was done now, I think you presume that there's a reason why, you know? And I know it can be pretty, you know, at some times, when you know, hey, we have to get something done, you know it's not going to be too much of an astronomical price, just to pretty much say, okay, let's do it, and then we're going to run it by the council to get final formal approval. And when you do it this way, it kind of seems like that. I think every item, coming back, can be pretty, you know, we got to get approval from the council, approval from the council, approval from the council. And I understand that. But I think in a situation like this, just a heads... Even just a heads up, even if it's informal, knowing that, hey, you have something coming, you know? It's going to be a bigger figure than what we thought. Not too crazy, but just a different figure, you know, and it's going to be coming to you. I think that's more of a, you know, a courtesy than anything. Because I think the way we do it now, it's almost, you know, I'm thinking in, and it's hard for me to believe that somebody didn't know what a certain figure was, you know? Because what we're saying now is that they keep billing us and billing us and billing us. So somebody at this contractor, the head of this contractor, the, you know, that's pretty much essentially saying that they can just bill whatever they want, you know? I don't say this bill is $200,000, you know, $300,000. It's just hard to believe that somebody on GU's side didn't know what the figure was. And if that is the case, that's fine, but just have a courtesy to let us know, I would say.
Okay, any other... Deputy Mayor Beckford?
Yeah, no, I agree with all the comments that the councilors have made. You know, this is something that we have to do, and I understand that, and this was something that the state mandated that we do, and I absolutely understand that. But once that conversation happens and the scope changes, the money has to change. It has to correspond, you know, change. And just a heads up, maybe you don't even have to have a figure just yet, but knowing that there's going to be some sort of cost overrun, and eventually, this is going to come across, would be nice. Would be a nice heads up. And that's all of that.
Anyone else? Councilor McCabe, do you have a comment? Councilor McCabe?
I just... I guess I keep coming back to, we got billed... We're keep getting invoices, and we didn't know what to expect. I mean, don't we sort of have a running list of the tests that we know need to be performed based on this change? And so we know what we're expected to come in for the invoices and how much each thing would cost. I'm just... I can't get past how we didn't know. And don't we have some sort of general foreman that's on site that has to sign off? Yeah, I saw these guys, you know, they did this test or that test? So there's sort of checks and balances as we're going through the process?
Well, one of the things that did happen on this is the... Basically, the project manager was environmental partners. So he outsourced the getting us through this event. He gave us a price. He gave us a price that included a bunch of testing. And when he saw that the scope was changing, he just kept moving ahead, doing what he was instructed to do every day by the EPA. We should have grabbed it earlier. And actually, I liked the comments about just informal communication as soon as we know, because this has been on the docket, and it's been sitting there to get through the Utility Commission and then bring up here. And we certainly could have mentioned it to you informally probably almost a full month ago. You know, because we've been working on the details. A month ago, we were like, okay, what are we going to do? How are we going to set this up? How are we going to issue purchase orders? That comment was extremely appropriate, and I apologize for that.
Anything else? Hey, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 10:5, 2020?
Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Extinction. Motion carries. Change order 19?
Change order 19, this is, I hate to keep saying this, but it's become fairly routine, is the next change order for the filtration plant. It has some credits where they changed some of the rigid conduit for the underground electrical work to rigid instead of aluminum. It had a few adds where they changed some piping, and they had to add a duct bank that actually wasn't anticipated to add in order to not kill some live telecom and stuff in the system already. It's for about $83,000, and the current contingency spreadsheet shows an approximate amount of about $550,000 left. We will be starting to run water through the filtration plant to the actual system next week. So this is really a milestone event at this point for the filtration plant.
Councilor Depot?
So I have a couple of questions about the changes. I do want to echo what Deputy Mayor Beckford said. Like, we know that these change orders are all required things that we have to do. However, sometimes things that we see in them are a little bit frustrating. On this one, for example, it says it was discovered there's no exterior lighting. Did we not know before that there was no exterior lighting? And that when we do the construction there, we would have to put exterior lighting? Like, these things, we discussed at a prior meeting that, you know, to look for these unanticipated costs, maybe from the beginning of the project. But, or even, you know, the humidifier or dehumidifier was installed, and then that location was deemed improper, so it had to be moved. And so it's an extra $25,000 because just because we had to remove a dehumidifier, move it to a different room. It seems like something like that could have been anticipated. So that, to me, is a little bit frustrating, which I don't... I mean, there's not really anything that you can do about that now. Like, obviously, these costs are required. But I do have like a practical question about something that I have no expertise in. But what is the difference in the galvanized rigid conduit and the aluminum conduit? Why... Do we just make that change for savings? And if so, what's the quality difference in the materials?
It's funny that you said that, because at the beginning of the project, one of the things that I was told right up front was that the project had gone in, and they anticipated changing the conduit materials and that there would be a credit. So, and that was told to me by Sandtech, the design engineer, right up front. So there's certain things that were done in the design that by the time they hit construction, they knew that they would be changing. Usually, the key is when you get... You know if the design engineer did a good job or a bad job, is you get to the point where you're all done, and you look back and you say, was that less than X percent of the construction costs? Because normally, design engineers expect a certain percentage of changes. And when we get to the end, we'll benchmark that and look at that, and we'll look at it two ways. One is without PCBs in the equation, and it seems that the amount of changes that are not related to PCBs is reasonable. And the other way we'll look at it is with PCBs. And of course, with PCBs, we pretty much spent the entire contingency. So with that view, it's a very different view. In terms of the exact what rigid does instead of aluminum, I'm not actually a materials expert. I actually don't know how to answer that question.
Good answer.
You know, I would guess that, I mean, if this is conduit for electrical wiring, I would assume that sometimes you might have to run wires across the floor or even above. But aluminum, you know, it does lose its shape. It probably isn't suitable for being run across the ground.
Also corrosion resistance, but depends on what kind of environment it's in, too. You get into galvanic and stuff like that. I don't know. I'm not a structural guy. Councilor Depot?
I guess, it looks like we're changing from the other piping to aluminum. I guess my question is, are we doing it just because it's cost savings? Because if that's the case, it's not always worth a cost savings if you're changing the materials?
I'm sorry, Councilor Stanford?
But if you're looking at this, it says some credit. So we're getting money back from this. So this is not debt to us in this change order.
That's my point.
And so if it's cheaper, it's good for us because we're saving money. You know, not cheaper as in not safety-wise.
At some point, the expert made a decision that it was suitable.
Can we just request to get an answer just on that? Was there... Is it just what the difference is, and does that change anything? Do we have to replace it sooner? Is it environmentally suitable?
The goal for this plant is to have it last the next 80 years. So anything that would be detrimental to that would not be approved by the operations crew. When they say that it was approved by Sandtech and then accepted by Grotten, you've all met Ray Valentin. Ray Valentin lives and breathes GU blue and spends money like it's his own. This is, which is, he wants quality, and he wants it for the best price he can get it, and won't give in to the contractor for anything. So if Ray accepted this, I'm 100% comfortable with it. And we can flip an email back around to you guys and explain the difference between rigid and aluminum.
Councilor Depot?
Well, I just want to clarify. I mean, it's not just the difference, but why we're changing it in the places that we're changing it for this credit? If it's just for the amount of money, just to get that credited back to compensate for the other changes that we're having to make? Or if it's a reasonable thing to change, you know, what are we offsetting that cost? What are we sacrificing to offset that cost? I think to clarify that would be good.
Will do.
Okay, any other comments? All right, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting at 10:5, 2020?
Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Extinction. Motion carries. TI sales?
Each year about this time, we come through and process a purchase order to tie sales for new Neptune metering. This is the last amount of money that was approved for the 2016 Water Bond Fund for the replacement of large industrial meters all the way to routine household 3/4-inch meters. There is a chart that I believe you were given that shows the status of the project also.
So will this complete the meter change out? Or will we need to come back for some additional funds?
There'll be some additional at the conclusion of this.
Okay, so I want to make sure. So what we're doing is we're using the rest of the 2016 bond fund, right? So what we're doing is we're using the rest of the two thousand sixteen bond fund, right? And then that'll get us through the period, and then we'll have to come back to you for additional authorization for bonding. Questions? Okay, need a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting at ten, five, twenty, twenty?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Von Pump?
The Von Pump, this is the authorization of a project to install a Von Pump. It actually pumps sludge in the digester. There's currently only one pump that does that, and it's not a very reliable pump. So this pump will actually install a fairly reliable pump to help with mixing in the moving of sludge in the digester building.
Okay, questions? All right, I need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting at ten, five, twenty, twenty?
I so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in, Councilor Devoe?
I just wanted to point out, you know, these are the kind of things that we weren't able to do before because the sewer budget wasn't separate. And this is going to improve the way our system works. And so I just want to point out that this is one of the things that probably wouldn't have gotten done because you'd have to get the money from somewhere else. But now that we have money in the sewer fund, we can make changes to the positive.
Absolutely. Any other comments? So we have, I got a motion, right? Motion's like, okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Electric Transmission Project?
Several months ago, we talked to you about a transmission project that's being required of us by the ISO, which is the transmission operator in New England. It is causing us to upgrade the fourteen-ten, the twelve-eighty, and the four-hundred transmission lines, which are the lines that feed high voltage to Buddington Substation. We're in the process of trying to put through a bonding package for approximately fifteen million dollars to do this work. The two thousand six, I believe we're using two thousand sixteen Electric Bond Fund had approximately a half a million dollars of transmission work that was authorized to be done. We did not do that transmission work yet, knowing that this, these changes were coming. So we figured we would go into that bucket of approved money to do the pre-design work and the design work for this project while we await funding of the larger bond fund that'll be following soon.
One of the things we're going to be coming to you with in the near future, once we figure out the schedule, is bonding authorization for approximately fifty million dollars for this ISO project, the transmission line project. And additional funding for Buzzrill Light and Power Fund. So that, I just want to give you a heads up. That's going to be coming as soon as we determine the schedule and how to do the reading of the ordinance and the public hearing. So any questions on this? I need, hearing none, I need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting at ten, five, twenty, twenty?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are now going to six fifty-five, which is Economic Development Projects. Okay, are you on?
I don't think so.
That's your mic up there, right?
Yeah, we do, we can do it there. Okay, I was going to say, we have a mic.
I'm going to use the fancy mic.
You're right. Thank you, Jamara.
All right, good evening, everyone. For those who do not know, my name is Sierra Patrick. I'm the city's economic development specialist. And today, I just wanted to give you guys an update of kind of where we are at with everything that's with our economic development. So what is economic development? It's a set, a set of activities that seek to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for the community by facilitating growth and development. So back in two thousand nineteen, we approved our two thousand nineteen Plan of Conservation and Development. And four goals that some of the activities I'll be talking to you about tonight are the ones that we're going to move forward. So that's promote economic and community development, prepare for climate change, prepare for climate change and sea level rise, explore transportation improvements and alternatives, and strengthen and enhance Thane Street and Five Corners. During two thousand nineteen, we partnered with the Town of Groton to do a Groton-wide economic development strategy. And from that collaboration, we discovered our strategy moving forward would be to empower the Groton communities in creating their own economic future by connecting, communicating, and collaborating to strengthen nodes while also improving the physical and social connection. So within the city of Groton, we have three nodes that we will be working on activating over the coming years. And that is Thane Street, Five Corners, and then Yukon Avery Point. So one first of our big initiatives, which you guys may have questions for, as I've heard, is the Strategic Marketing and Communications. So back in two thousand nineteen, you guys know that we did a brand workshop to start to help identify ways that the city of Groton can improve our communication channels. And through that, we discovered some ways. We went out to bid, and we came back. And the selection committee is recommending that we move forward with Miranda Creative to be our brand manager. And some of the things that she, that that organization will be working with us on is to create a united brand presence among all of our departments, to enhance our digital presence, both the city of Groton and Groton Utilities online, help us create an email database so that we can better engage with constituents, create universal resources such as templates like our letterheads, how we do presentations, brochures, merchandise. We also want to set up a custom stock photography. That way, when we need to pull for whatever work that we're doing, we actually have our own photos that we can pull from. And also about three promotional videos, something that we can actually share with others and engage and talk more about our community. From that, after we create those elements, we are going to do, also create a brand management plan that is leading up to our one hundred and twentieth anniversary, which is in two thousand twenty-three. So create the database, implement and train people on how to use it, and then start to get that messaging and build those relationships out there. From this initiative, some project extensions are going to be business spotlights. So the E D C is working on creating these like thirty seconds or less videos with local business owners. And we're going to utilize those videos to, like, within our own database, like, our own platform. So whether it's online on like our visitor site or our Doing Business site, or whether it's through our community engagements that were due online, we'll try to use those promotional videos to kind of help promote them and get them business. One of the assuming factors or assumptions that were behind that is that right now, businesses, we know are struggling. And most of the time, their marketing budget is like the first thing to go. And it's something that we actually have a capacity to do. So we, we thought that we'll take that on. Also from, branching from this would be re-envision Groton City. And pardon all the names, I create names for projects just for my own sanity. But Re-vision Groton City is basically a series of engagements. We were trying to bring everything somewhat online with COVID and us having to do social distancing. So it would be online, but we're also exploring ways that people can text in or voicemail us, leave us voicemails on specific projects. And I will get into more of those projects as we move forward. Before I leave from this, though, do you guys have any questions? I know I'm throwing a lot of information out.
Councilor Devoe?
I was just going to say, I think I heard you say this, but I just wanted to confirm. So I really like the idea of getting all of our online systems unified. Are we going to have training for department heads who, because not every department is currently on the same system? And I know that, you know, for some people, it's really easy to just go on and figure it out. But for some people, it's not so easy to know how to find the stuff they're looking for on their, you know, new platform or whatever. Are we going to have something set up to train all of our employees to make sure that they know how to use the system if we're changing it on them?
Yes, right now, we're working with, so there's a city communications team that has representation from all of the department heads. They would be the focus group that we would be trying to train. And if there's more people that need to be involved in that training, then we more than welcome them.
Any other questions? This is on Strategic Marketing Communication Initiative?
Yes.
Are you getting ready to move to the next lineup?
Yes.
Okay, before you do that, so for the Strategic Marketing Communication Initiative, this is for the acceptance of Miranda Creative as a preferred consultant. I need a motion to move that to the Mayor and Council meeting at ten, five, twenty, twenty?
Your microphone is muted.
Thank you.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, business spotlight, this is informing, right?
Pardon?
Business spotlight is informing?
Yes, but I went over it in this, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the business spotlight is done? Okay, the Community Resiliency Plan?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so Community Resiliency Plan, the selection committee is recommending Maloney McBreen as a preferred consultant to move forward with implementing the plan. Their scope of work would be assessment of the city's vulnerabilities to climate change and sea level rise. They'll identify adaptation strategies and projects, both short-term and long-term, for us to move forward with. We will also develop an action plan, and they will do updates to the Eastern Park Historic District regulations. On here is just a chart of the consultant fee and where we have gotten money to cover for their expenses.
Questions from the council? Councilor Devoe?
It's less of a question, more of a comment. I just want to say, I know that Sierra's always looking for funding opportunities. And I appreciate that we're not asking the taxpayers for funding for every little thing that we do, that we're looking for grants and other places to generate some of the money that's going to help our community. So I just wanted to say, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, then I need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting at ten, five, twenty, twenty?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Pedestrian and bicycle network assessment?
Okay, so one of the other activities that we'll be working on is with re-envision Groton City, the online tool, we're going to do a mapping exercise. So building from our Plan of Conservation and Development and incorporating both the Regional Bike and Ped Plan, both the Town of Groton's Master Bike Plan, we want to map out all of our existing and proposed trails as well as identify any gaps in the sidewalk infrastructure and any other needed improvements or facilities for the whole network. We hope that the result, the results will help us prioritize some of our projects and help us assist, give us better information to do more feasibility and preliminary designs for specific trail extensions. Were there any questions for?
Questions on the bike plan? Pedestrian and bike plan? Councilor McKee?
When you finish this network plan, are you going to share it on our website? Or how do, how do we see this? I'm very interested in, in knowing what the walking opportunities are around the city. So I would want to see this.
No, absolutely. So every, our, the city of Groton website is going to serve as the hub for where all the information will be. And then I'm exploring right now a Co-Urbinate, it's called, it's a software called Co-Urbinate. It's a platform, online platform, where you'll actually be able to see the map and the project and leave your own comments of what you want to do. So it's an interactive thing. So I would hope, like, if you're interactive for it, I'm looking forward to seeing what your comments will be on that. And I will, we still try, have to get all the things prepared. But I will do a rollout session and explain exactly how the community can engage in that process.
So one of the things that we're looking at is we're looking to make the city of Groton walkable and bikeable. And, and therefore, make it a reason for people to come here, to make it a destination location as part of the economic development, to bring people in. And then we'll also, we're also going to be focusing on businesses and bringing the businesses here so that people will have something to come to when they're down here. So it's, it's all together, that we're trying to do it in a couple of different phases. But I think this is the, making the city of Groton, improving the walkability, bikeability is going to be key in the next few years.
Agreed.
Okay, Visioning, sorry, Visioning Theme Center?
All right, so Visioning Theme Center is going to be another series of exercises. But we're going to get some professional services to help us actually collaborate with stakeholders. And we're going to, so, sorry, let me backtrack. So Theme Center area is going to be from Broad Street to Baker Ave, the Thane Street stretch. And so working with consultants and the community stakeholders to start to plan and reprogram some underutilized space in that area. And our goal is to try to do some, get something planned for summer, for spring and summer of next year. So we're going to first, we're going to initiate this with Connecticut Main Street, which, just so you guys can know, the city of Groton is a Connecticut Main Street. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but we ate us on that, we registered for that. But they will come in and do some work with us on really identifying how to revitalize that district. So looking forward to that, and I will keep you guys abreast of how to connect. There's a Thane Street Riverwalk. The Coast Guard Academy is going to do a capstone project of analyzing a potential riverwalk on the northern, I'm sorry?
Hold on, you went to the riverwalk. I want to break, because I got to move the Visiting Theme Center. Are you done with Theme Center, Visiting Theme Center?
Oh, I, I guess I am, but the riverwalk and the J-Less study, I kind of was lumping in since they're all in the same area.
All right, fine. Go ahead, go ahead. At some point, I need to make, get a motion for the Visiting Theme Center because we're going to have to get the council to accept the grant.
Oh, that's on the next slide.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Thane Street Riverwalk, Coast Guard Academy will be doing a capstone project where they'll engage the community stakeholders and really kind of give us like an initial feasibility. And then they're going to be, give us a concept drawing based off of some of the research that they do from around the country of what other communities have done for their riverwalks. The Joint Land Use Parking Study, you guys may be aware of that's moving forward. And that will also help us identify some more parking options with on, on Thane Streets and, on Thane Streets. That would be really...
Just one question. When is that parking study? Do you know when that may be completed?
When it will be completed?
Yes.
I know it's going to be about an eighteen-month process, and they just, they're final...
We just finished, we just finished interviews last week. We have not notified the winner yet. And we are debating amongst ourselves on whether we want to start it sooner or maybe a little bit later. The concern that some of us have is that during this COVID period, that we may have an overcount of residentials and an undercount of actual electric boat vehicles and other vehicles and Pfizer vehicles, right? Because of people working from home. We're trying to figure out how to get around that, whether that's a factor that we multiply or we go back to historical data. But you're right, it should take about eighteen months.
Have we, have we reached out to Pfizer or Electric Boat to see what their plans are?
Well, yes, yes. But more importantly, they are going to be involved, particularly Electric Boat, specifically rather, Electric Boat is going to be involved. They're going to have... Specifically, rather, Electric Boat is gonna be involved, they're gonna have, uh, there's gonna be a VP that will be going to, to get them involved in this whole thing so that, uh, we can identify the amount of people coming in, when you're gonna have them, uh, where are they gonna work, where are we gonna park? Because the big challenge that we have here is, right now, we start out about ten thousand people in the morning and then we have people that leave, we bring in about fifteen thousand people a day between, uh, EV, Pfizer and Yukon every point. So additional five thousand people, how do you get them in, how do you get them out, where do you put them, and what do you do with them when they're here? So, one of the things we're looking at is parking, one of the things is pedestrian safety. Another thing is, uh, even down the level, where are you gonna put the food trucks? Right, so all these things are, are gonna be evaluated. And, uh, like I said, we have a cup, we just, Thursday, last Thursday was when we interviewed three, we were down, we started with six, we went down to three and then now we're down to our final one. So that should start in the next few months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, Theme Center for Innovation Place has awarded the city of Groton, um, about two hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. I am in the process, um, here are potential matches and I'm in process of working with the grant coordinator just to assure matches are eligible for, for that grant.
Councilor Devoe?
Uh, so just to clarify, so the, the award requires us to match that amount with, uh, other projects or things that also impact the same area, which we're gonna try to do projects that we already wanted to do anyways, but just specify that they will impact the same area so that we can get this grant.
Yes, and, and just to clarify, um, this grant from TRIP is over two years, so we're able to go back from all the mon- all the investments that we've made from two thousand and nineteen, including this year. We get to do it because of how COVID, that they're being lenient and let us roll over, um, our award.
Agreed.
So what we have to do is, there are a couple of those on there that, uh, I've asked Sierra to go back to TRIP, these are in Renovation Place and, uh, make sure that they're gonna qualify and if they qualify, then they're good. But I will not bring this, I'm gonna get you to move it, but I will not bring it forward to the council until we have verified all of our, uh, matching is gonna be accepted. Any other questions? Anything else on that? Okay, all right, with that, I need a motion to move the visiting theme center to the mayor and council meeting at ten five twenty twenty?
So moved, second.
We have a motion to the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, does that, that complete your presentation? Thank you, Sierra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing we're gonna go to is five sixty-one, which is Groton Utilities Financials. Turn that over to Ron.
All right, we'll flip to page six, I will tie up page eight this week. Hopefully go to the correct page. And that's the electric division, um, operating statement for the year to date. We look at row nineteen, the total electric revenue, the budget amount was eight point six million, currently at eight point nine, just under nine million dollars. So favorable variance of three hundred and twenty thousand on the revenue side, mainly driven by the residential and the industrial non-manufacturing groups. Total revenue line twenty-five, which includes the industrial pass-through, is over budget, um, by three hundred forty-eight thousand at ten point two versus the budget of nine point nine. The total operating expenses, row forty-one, is under budget. The budget was nine point four million, currently at roughly nine point three, expenditures are a hundred and twenty-two thousand under. You see, the big driver there is the purchase power is up based on the revenues being above budget. So it kind of offsets with the power cost and then you'll see the operation maintenance is below. One thing to keep in mind, in August, we had the storm, which resulted in a lot of the crews up in Basra Territory working. So a lot of the crew, from the labor standpoint, was charged to Basra and out of Groton Utilities. So that's why, that is a good favorable variance and you'll see that was bigger in the month of August when you look at the month to date as well. So that was what drove the, um, operating expenses. Row sixty-four, the net income before extraordinary items, is nine hundred thousand versus a budget of four hundred and twenty thousand or four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars favorable to the budget. So overall, currently, I know we're only two months in, but everything is running pretty much along. Like I said, the big driver there was that storm at the beginning of August that had some labor allocation.
Any questions on water? Okay, water?
Flip to page twelve. Start with row seventeen, total water revenue, the budget amount was two point one million and we're right at, um, the budget amount with the actual, it's point one four, fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, three seventy-nine favorable. So pretty much right on budget from the revenue side, we can see a little bit of an offset and we're below in commercial, but up in residential. Total operating expenses, row thirty, all right, one point seven versus a budget of one point nine or a hundred and seventy-five thousand favorable. Again, just this time of year, operation maintenance runs a little bit, um, behind budget. Row forty-eight, net earnings before debt principal was eight hundred and twenty thousand versus the budget of six hundred and seven or two hundred and thirteen thousand favorable, um, the net income for the water division. So waters, again, revenue side is pretty much tracking right on target with budget and then just a little bit behind on the expense side, or below budget.
Any questions on water? Any sewer?
Flip to page seventeen. And the total sewer revenue, the year to date is, uh, just over eight hundred thousand versus a budget of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand or just about fifty thousand favorable. The big driver there is the industrial and we've talked about this the last couple of meetings with the deduct meters at an industrial company that, um, were budgeted for and that are not being deducted currently, so that's the driver there. The total operating expenses on row twenty-six, actual is four hundred and thirty-six thousand versus the budget is six oh five, um, a hundred and seventy thousand below budget, very similar to the water, um, operations. Row thirty-seven, net income from operations, is that three hundred and thirty-six year to date versus a budget of ninety-seven thousand or two hundred and forty thousand favorable to the budget currently. And like I said, again, we're just getting into the fiscal year, so this could just kind of picture through office.
Okay, questions on sewer?
And then one other thing that I was gonna, actually Ron was gonna talk about these, um, during this, we just wanted to bring them to your attention because they will be coming through and you've seen them in the past, it's a neighborhood assistance, um, grant that comes through. We, we sponsor a little amount of profits, um, in the or, in the re, in our service territory that apply to us. That's our first criteria. Um, there were currently four in the current year, um, that we decided that we would like to sponsor. The way this program works is they submit, go through the process with the state. The state approves a project that for energy efficiencies or energy conservations, then they apply to us to sponsor them as part of that program. If we decide to sponsor them, we submit our sponsorship to the state on which, um, agencies and the amounts that we'd like to contribute to. And then the state will approve those, there's a certain bucket of money that they have. And then what happens is if they approve our project, we get a tax credit for that full amount. So there's no cost to the electric company for doing this program. It's really a win-win for everybody, the community gets the donation, it comes through us and we get reimbursed from the tax side. So the programs that worked, walked into the neighborhood assistance program, um, was the I D L S Home Kit, doing this at Fairview, um, for just under ninety-four thousand and that will go through the Basra, um, Light Power Group. There was no organization within that Basra Territory that put in an application, so therefore we elected to move one from the Groton Territory up there. The three for the Groton Utilities and the max that we can do as a utility is a hundred and fifty thousand. We did the Avery Todd House, uh, which was a full request for sixty-two thousand four hundred. The Bill Memorial Library, which is a full request of nineteen thousand five twenty-five. And Sacred Heart School, which we only did a partial number, we capped at the one fifty of sixty-eight oh seventy-five. Their full request was a hundred and thirty thousand eight twenty-seven, so we kinda broke it down between those three organizations to, to spread it out. And there were four energy conservation programs that, like I said, have been approved by the state, so we'll get those back. So it's just a, it's a great program. And then the one other one that we're just, um, so we're gonna send the application into the state for these. We're not necessarily sure of these dollar amounts yet, because if there's a lot of them that get submitted, the state may have that cap that these may get reduced. So this is what we're hoping for, uh, but we will keep you posted on that. It'll just come through as a resolution, so we don't wanna kind of surprise you when it came through, I just wanna make you aware of it. One that we didn't do last year, but we did it a few years ago, was the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority Housing Tax Credit Contribution Program. Very similar program, energy efficiencies and those types of things. It's, and it works in a very similar fashion, it's a dollar for dollar tax credit reimbursement, it's close to the state for an application. Um, the one that came to us was Mystic River Homes Convent. And we elected, they, it was actually a couple of different ones, um, that they had, we selected to do the five hundred thousand dollar contribution. And again, that will be, um, a tax credit on the other side, so it'll be in a.
Councilor Devoe?
I don't know if this really fits in exactly, but I, I was thinking about it before. How are we doing on, um, accounts receivable? Are we still, um, like due to COVID, do we, is it evident? Like, are people not paying their bills still or have we seen that rebound a little bit? Or, cause I know, uh, Councilor Carter had brought up before with winter coming, do we have a plan? Because under COVID, you can't shut off people's electric, under, in the winter, you can't shut off people's electric. Not that we wanna do that, but do we have a plan to maybe help the community through this period or is it not an issue?
Do you want me to address?
Yeah, you wanna take that one?
Yeah, I talked to, I talked.
From the receivable side where we're, we're up a little bit, but we're not overly bad with it.
We're at about ten percent. Um, I talked to Tina Daniels, who is Customer Service General Manager. And we've been working with people throughout the entire COVID saying, you need to have some kind of a, a plan, set up a bill, pay anything, because there's going to come a time when the amnesty, for lack of a better term, is gonna go away. One October is that day. We will start shutting off one October, because in November is when with the weather turning, that we will no longer shut off. But we're working with people to come up, if they will come up, if people will do anything, if they'll just put just a little bit and come up with a payment plan, Groton Utilities will, will work for them. They're not saying, okay, you haven't paid for six months, we want it all, or we shut you off. If, if, we're working on payment plans. I don't know how, I don't know the length of the longest payment plan, but I know, and, and we've been proactive. Tina has had our customer service reps calling people, sending them letters, talking to them and say, look, we wanna work with you. Councilor, well, let me go.
Sorry, I just, that was kind of leading into my question, have we put it on the website, are we, um, communicating?
I don't know, it should be on the website, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay.
That, that.
I, I only ask because now I pay online, so.
Right.
Be nice.
Well, and we have, you know, we have multiple ways for people to pay, but if you don't have the money, you can have twenty-five different ways to pay and if I can't pay you, I can't pay you this way and I can't pay you that way and I can't pay you that way, right? So, I agree with you, there's easy, we're making it easier for people to pay. Uh, the challenge that we're running into is the COVID has hit southeastern Connecticut fairly hard. And we do have a lot of people out there that have lost their jobs or have had reduced hours. Uh, and the utility is sensitive to that and they are, they're working as much as they possibly can. Now, we're fairly fortunate, there are other municipalities, correction, municipal electric utilities, uh, that have fifteen, twenty percent, accounts receivable rate, collection rate. And that's, it is to the point where it's almost hurtful to their bottom line. Now, they could still, they could still make payroll, but, uh, you know, it's a balance between running a business and working with people and so far, Groton Utilities, I think, has done a great job with that balance. Our, the way that we treat people and our customer service is, I think, second to none. So did that answer?
That didn't.
Maybe not, maybe it did it?
It didn't.
But, oh, but I do wanna say, this, the, you're talking about the auto pay, right?
I was just saying, we should put something on the website if it's not already there, but it sounds like.
Let me, let me write this down.
Tina's all over it, so I don't wanna.
Well, I think Tina is all over, but you mentioned the auto pay. We are doing a beta on the auto pay and that means, so what the auto pay is, you're gonna be able to pay your bills electronically, which is good. You can also pay them with a check, you can also come to the, uh, we have a Dropbox and if you're paying with cash, exact cash, then you can come in and people can pay at the, um, uh, at customer service. So the utility, uh, TVC is no longer, uh, accepting payments out of this building. So, but Groton Utilities still is and the municipal side is still open. The building inspector is here through appointments only, so if you call them. But we do have a greeter out front right now, so you gotta wear your mask, you gotta social distance and you can come in and then we'll get people to, to where they need to go.
I just, to, to go on top of that, can we, uh, uh, cause October first is in, it's not very far away.
October first is.
Can we maybe reiterate and put it on, um, all of our platforms? Like, if you're having an issue, please call and, and, just, just to encourage people to call, cause I know sometimes during these types of situations, people can kind of put their head in sand?
Yep.
And out of fear, maybe, and maybe to encourage them and say, hey, please call us, we'll work with you to make sure that we don't end up with residents with their power cut off when it doesn't need to happen.
Absolutely, and we don't, and we also don't wanna be insensitive.
Right.
Cause like I said, this has, this has been a hard time. So we, we do wanna be sensitive to people, Councilor Carter?
Yeah, and I think, I don't speak for them, but I, I, uh, ju- just to be in like a, a realist, you know? I think the majority of the people that are or possibly could be in an assessed amount of arrears, don't go looking at the Groton City or Groton Utilities website to begin with. So I, I think, I think even a proactive approach, um, and I remember just years back, you know? I mean, it's been some time, but I remember when I was paying my past due, you know? And I remember, uh, Sal, does he still work here, the guy Sal?
Nope, Sal retired.
So, so Sal used to actually call, say, hey, Mr. Carter, just, just to let you know, you have your bill due. That doesn't happen anymore, you know?
Well, that's, they've been doing that.
So, so, so if they did that, as you were saying, the proactive approach, say, listen, you, you don't have to be afraid. We don't wanna judge, you don't have to set something up, you know, because of, the, that population that I think that we're thinking about, I don't think that they're gonna be looking at the Facebook and looking, or what can I do? Just being real.
Nope, that's good. What Tina told me they were doing is they've been reaching out for months, talking to people to, to get them on any kind of a pay. And, and they say, okay, if you can't pay now, then can you pay later, can you pay a little bit? So they're actually calling people.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
The other thing is they put some information in the, they put some information in the, uh, bills. But I agree with you, if, if.
And when I look up.
You're probably not able to pay, uh, you may not be on Facebook.
Yeah, you're not gonna be looking at the bill.
Well, absolutely, because you open it up and you see all the pink slip, right? I mean, every year I get one, you know, in the summertime, cause, you, you know, we're, we're changing things and days are changing and, and, you know, I'll see a pink and I'm like, dude, what happened, what are we doing here?
All the time, I'm not too proud to say that.
But, uh, so there, I mean, they'll send things to everybody. I mean, the first time it happened, I just went over and said, hey, how, what do you do with this? I said, oh my God, who's overdue? I said, well, I am. We're like, oh my gosh. Yeah, well, that's because we didn't pay our bill. But, uh, but it's real easy and they're easy to deal with. So, all right, you wanna go to the next one? Is there any other questions on this? Okay, let's go to six ninety, which is city, city budget presentation, this is informing?
This is, I've had your spots on tonight. Again, this is very, how, we're just in August, and with everything going on, it's a very slow start, um, to the year. You know, some of these have capital projects in these line items. Again, the building department has a big piece with the inspection. So you see, a lot of the percentages are still very high as we go through. So there's nothing that really stands out at this point. The one you'll look at, and you may say is, wow, the potential insurance, it's at already forty-eight point eight. A lot of those are upfront costs right on July one. That's why. Then there's certain ones that will hit that quarterly, but the majority of them are on July one. That's why that looks.
Any questions on city budget? All right, we have nothing else. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.